Okay. Let me call this especially called council work session to order. Ms. Salter, if you'll call roll, please.
Yes, sir. Council Waltney.
Here.
Council Geer.
Here.
Council Alamon.
Here.
Council Wolverson.
Here.
Council Sims.
Here.
Council Jones.
Here.
Council Smith.
Here.
Council Nels.
Here.
Council Andres.
Here.
Council Harden.
President Wyatt.
Here.
So is Mr. Harden on the list?
I think so.
We weren't getting my on the bills today.
That's right.
So you have a call.
Sorry, at a day. All right, thanks everyone for being here. This is a sort of continuation of the mid-year review because the mid-year review was different this year. With COVID, we talked about putting a number of things off to this point, discussing them. And so we're going to start that process tonight. We will continue it at a additional, at least one more council work session where we will talk more probably about capital projects at that point. Tonight, what I'd like to do and what I've asked Robert and Melody and the mayor to do is to sort of give us an overview of where we are in comparison with past years revenue-wise and to talk about some of the differences this year and sort of where we stand on some things. And then, like I said, we'll also schedule a subsequent meeting where we'll talk about the various capital projects and bond money and things like that tonight. Tonight, I just want to focus on the sort of the big picture aspect of it and then we'll get to that list a little bit later in another meeting. So with that, Mr. Burgett, should we turn it over to you to start with?
I guess.
And by the way, thank you for sending around the information earlier today to everybody.
Yes, sir. Again, you all called this meeting to get a little more in-depth into the numbers.
Robert, can you make sure your mic is on? I think I just started.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
A little more in-depth into the numbers because at the prior finance committee meeting, we kind of went through them real fast. So, you know, let me give you some good news first is that April revenue numbers came back strong. Our sales tax was up, our lodging tax for the first time showed some recovery. Our business license, we've made budget on business license to date. Well, no, I'm sorry, on business license, we've made our annual budget because it all comes in at the first of the year. We've made our budget on our property tax. Sales tax is running above budget currently. We're still down 404,000 in lodging tax, but with the month of April, you could see that it's starting to return. So the numbers are coming back. But keep in mind that we wrote our budget numbers down last year also because of COVID compared to prior years. But that's some good news that we see it in the trend, that things are slowly returning to normal for us. If you look at this packet that we gave out, we did, as we said earlier, we did a little different this year. We've always compared our general fund expenditures to our total general fund revenues. Well, we have transfers out of that amount. We have, all our sales tax goes into our general fund, the full four cents on the dollar, and we transfer one cent of that to the Board of Education and one cent to the debt service fund to fund our bond payment. So this year, we actually are looking at just our general fund operating revenues with the transfers out, taken out of it. It gives us a truer picture of what we're looking at. And on this first page, you can see that our operating revenues have been, you know, consistently increasing over the years. A lot of that is due to the increase in property tax and the increase to sales tax, which is 50% of our operating budget. On this number, we have not had the excess revenue to date for the fiscal year '20 that's under audit, but it's going to come back slightly higher than the $65,000 that we've projected. But at the same time, in the past, we've always been able to transfer money out of the general fund to fund capital. The last three years, we've transferred a million dollars and prior to that, it was 750 and 500. Capital only has $2 million of funding, standalone funding, and we've been transferring from general fund to supplement that, and that we did not do in '20. If you'll turn to the second page, it gives you some, just some general year-to-date numbers on our sales tax revenue. December, I'm sorry, October, November, we were below the prior year. Starting in December, we have exceeded prior year's revenues on sales tax, which is a good trend and it's moving up. We're actually 7% above budget on sales tax. And this is net of our tax incentive payments that we make to target to other different businesses in the community that have tax incentive arrangements with the city. We approximately, at mid-year of this year, we've paid out $506,934 in tax incentives, which has been deducted from our revenue on that. On the next page, it's just a breakdown of where our sales tax goes. As you can see, the sales tax is distributed between three funds, the general fund, the Board of Education, and capital projects. And again, you can see the capital projects is funded at about $2 million on average, with the general fund is in the 22 to 24 million dollar area, with the Board of Education being funded at eight and a half to nine million dollars in sales tax revenue. And again, the tax incentives affect our general fund and our capital, but they do not affect our Board of Education funding. They are funded without any concern for sales tax incentives. Property tax, we've made budget on property tax.
Robert?
Yes, sir.
For example, someone shows up in our city and wants a tax rebate for a period of time, is that what you're talking about? We're not going to not fund the schools. We'll do a rebate form in other areas. That's what you're talking about?
Correct. You cannot do the Board of Education money for tax incentive purposes. And on the next page is our, just our property tax revenues, which we have, when this was done, we had not made budget at 331. At 430, we had made budget in property tax, which is good news. The distribution was a little slow coming in this year. I don't know exactly why, but we feel like to this point, we are 99% funded in property tax based on the abstract that was provided to us and the revenue that we've received. And we have property tax, both at the lower and personal, and both those numbers are up compared to the prior year and our budget numbers. And there are just some general graphs that on the next page that show our revenue. Actually, the sales tax revenues is down from '20 for the fiscal year '19, and we're actually above '20 in our current year, in fiscal year '21. Then there's the, again, general fund, the operating revenues, which is minus the payment to the debt service and the Board of Education.
So we're about, it looks like almost even with '19's numbers on '20.
Yes, sir. There, it's running, yeah, it's running very, very even for the fiscal year ended '20. And fiscal year '21 is slightly ahead of '20 at this time. If you flip to the next page, though, just the trend of our expenditures, our expenditures are rising. They're going up. You know, we, the mayor had, early in this pandemic, had called for a spending freeze. The departments, department heads, I think they've done an excellent job of trying to control spending. If you look at the line items, there's a lot of the supply lines, uniform expenses, some of the smaller expenses that they've really controlled really well. The fixed expenses have still come in. Our personnel costs have basically remained static because, you know, you really can't do a lot with cutting salary employees' expenses. They've remained very close to prior years. They really couldn't be affected by a spending freeze that the mayor had asked for. And that had the greatest effect on capital project expenditures and on some of the smaller line items in the general fund. That's a concern, the fact that our, the fact that we have had declining revenues the last two years over three years ago, and the fact that our expenditures are still rising. Some concerns about that, that we, that Melanie and I have looked at and expressed to the finance committee, the council. We have, the council recently approved the tier-two conversion for employees, and I got the numbers today, as a matter of fact, of the exact cost of that conversion, and this is for the next 15 years. But that's the unfunded liability portion from 10-113 through 930 of '21 is $975,296. Now, they're going to allow us to amortize that over 15 years. We're going to pay a small portion with an increase in our factor.
You say 972?
975 to 96. No, ma'am, I didn't, I didn't print this out for this one. The total cost through 930 of '21, and they'll allow us to advertise that over the 15 years. And then there's the increase in the cities factor that's going to be on overall, on all our employees. So basically, this year alone, the tier-one conversion is going to cost the city $175,820. And from what I have been told and can gather, that will be the cost for the next 15 years. It will slightly increase each year, it's going up, and in addition to any increase that they may have for additional unfunded liability. But in speaking with them, after 15 years, they're saying that our factors will go down, that there's some formula that they have based on the numbers that they're using, that the factors will go down after 15 years for our pension liability.
Robert, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
We had talked about the state legislature sort of stepping in at some point to try to correct this. This is something that the state had put on the municipalities. Alex or Patrick, anybody know anything about that, or is that something you want me to try to look into?
I haven't heard anything about it.
As far as I know, they have not taken any action to do that. Obviously, if they would, it'd be great, but they have not to this point that I'm aware of at least. You know, I would love for them to do that until they, until we see some movement that makes us, and I think you should advocate for that as the liaison, I do think that that's appropriate. But in terms of us counting on that at this point, until I see something serious coming out of Montgomery, I think we should sort of assume that it, that may never happen, or if it does, it's going to be a long way away.
So, Robert, I want to make sure, we owe them in unfunded liabilities $975,000, and in a sense, they're going to finance it for us over 15 years.
Yes, sir.
At $176,000 a year, is that what you're saying?
A portion of that $175,000 goes to pay that unfunded pension liability. That $175,000 is two parts. It's basically $90,000 a year of the unfunded pension liability, and it's $85,000 a year change in the tier-two employee contribution. That's where the 175 comes from.
And can I say, President Wyatt?
Yes.
Can I make one comment about the, because somebody might have been here at that time? You know, we can only change employees' contributions right now under tier-one, non-public safety, like myself. If we pay 7.5% of our base salary, we pay that. The city pays about 15.8%. So if I make about $100, I pay 7.5, the city pays 15.8, as I'm a tier-one. Public safety is, they pay 8.5 because they have a little bit better benefit package in our territory for being public safety. But cities still pays 15.8, they pay 8.5%. Tier-two, 6 and 7%. People like me, they're tier-two, 6%, public safety, 7%. Cities factors, about what, 14%, something like that? Because it's a lesser.
14.23.
It's a lesser benefit retirement, which is the whole reason why they wanted the conversion. But one of the things that they're letting cities do, but unfortunately, we've already done, it's not helping us, is back in 2011 or '12, '13, one of those three years, I can tell you which one for sure, we, the first year, you could actually go under Act 676 of Alabama Legislature, when we had the unfunded issues happening because of the number of employees we have, we already elected to go to that, where we went from 5 and 6% to the 7.5 and the 8.5. Now, a lot of the other cities that are doing this are getting to do that. They haven't been, not, not very many cities that I know of around here other than us actually went to the 7.5. So unfortunately, that might be the relief right now, but for us, we've already done that because our pension factors are already going so high with no employees.
That would be the only relief we could use right now.
Correct. But that is a relief, like, best safety, I think, elected, that they can, that they make, that they can go to that. I think that they are trying to defer as long as they can, but still be at the 5 and 6. But that's the relief that a lot of cities are going to get to do the tier-one conversion is start raising, making employees contribute additional 2.5. But we are at the maximum unless they make another allowance for cities. We can't charge employees anymore than the, so I was letting you know, there was an allowance a lot of employees, cities are going to be going to. We just elected that a few years back.
Sure.
And one of the few around here to move to that, unfortunately.
But we're also one of the few with 500-plus employees, so it really affects us more than...
Correct. So I just wanted to make a note of that, that if you hear some cities talking about it, they have elected now to come in. I think it required to come under 676.
If you do the tier-two conversion, you're required to come back. It's Act 2011 676, it's a requirement. But in the end, our overall factors going forward, we're actually going to go up on our tier-one employees from 15.8 to a total of 16.06 for the next fiscal year, and the tier-two employees are going to be 16.29. So we're going to see a bump up not only in the conversion costs, but also in the tier-one employee costs. That, again, the way this continues to grow is a concern and needs to be, you know, something to keep an eye on. Again, with expenditures, another item that has increased is just been our cost of our insurance. Our insurance costs have gone up. The current policy, which began 2-2, went up $175,921 over the prior year, and we are expecting similar increases for the next two years. We have a very, very high workers' comp expense ratio, and then we have a lot of accidents on our automobile policy, which they're anticipating for the next two years. It takes three-year cycle to come, to change your rating, so we're looking at increases for the next two years in those two items. Though those are something we need to be considerate of and think about when we consider expenditures. Another item which is going to affect next year's budget, which is not written in this year's budget, is the stipend that we've given to the retiring employees, the health insurance stipend. We've had three take advantage of that so far. There'll probably be, there's more that will take advantage before the end of the fiscal year. Not sure exactly what the total overall cost of that is going to be until we know the total number of employees. But, and in expenditures, when we wrote down our budget from the transfers, I've always told the council that we're operating at 54% on personnel costs of our general fund. Well, when you take out the $16 million that's transferred, that's not used for operating expense, that makes our personnel costs 72% of our general fund. And that is a, that's a very high number. I've talked to a couple of the other neighboring cities, and theirs are not close to that number. So, and again, they don't have the employees we have, they don't have garbage, they don't have fleet, different, there's reasons for that. But at 72% of our operating fund, that's something that we need to keep in mind, keep mindful of and keep a look at going forward because it is increasing, basically, at $2 million a year. The next page is just a, just a little graph that we put in that, for the first time, and found out earlier, this was discussed years even before I was here, there was always concern about how close our revenue and our cost of operations were running. It's always been discussed, even prior before myself, but this is the first time that our actual, and COVID is a response for this, but that our actual expenses exceeded our revenues. And without the COVID relief CARES Act money they've received, we would have been in even worse situation this year. But due to that, it did cause us to exceed revenues with operating expenses this year. Couple of items that they discussed have been the bond revenue. Just want to give you a quick report on the original 55 million that was brought in. We have expensed most of that money. We had the park project, we had the police, the new public safety center. The remaining balance, we have already, the 18th Street, I'm sorry, the Green Springs revitalization cost is in this number. The improvements to the 18th Street Mimi Foster interchange improvement there has already been taken out because it's been approved by council. And basically, the number that we have today of the original 55,000, there's $406,865 remaining.
55 million.
Out of 55 million, how much did you say?
Out of, there's 406.
406.
Yeah, $406,865 remaining of that money.
Are we done paying for Green Springs?
No, there's purchase orders issued.
The purchase orders have been issued, the money's been encumbered, but at the date, he's only spent about $560,000.
Right now, we just pay Kenley more, but we're taking out all the purchase orders like they've been paid, they've been issuing and encumbering.
So the number reflects the revenues have been...
Yes.
The money's still sitting in the account, but it's already...
There's more money than 406,000, but when you take the actual money, less the POs that have been written. And if something happens, some of them come in, we might have a little bit more than that, but it should be pretty accurate because we have contracts signed.
And you said the money had already come out for the Mimi Foster 18th Street?
Yes, but that PO has been written as well. Yes, ma'am.
One more we're going to ask you all about finance next week, but it's a small one, but the original done construction of 142 has already been a purchase order written on that one.
Yeah, there's a $2,500 budget amendment to that item. But we try to write the POs when y'all approve the projects because that encumbers the money, it gives us a PO to expense to, and they're easier to track. When the POs aren't issued and we're getting invoices and we're kind of chasing our tail to put two and two together sometimes, so we really encourage that we get the POs issued as soon as y'all approve them. Let me see what else. One thing that I want to point out, too, is in the general fund, our operating expenditures being 72% of our revenue, that is even after we have expensed, wrong paper. We expense some salaries and benefits to restricted money. There's money that is, that is, the seven cent gas tax pays some salary benefits, we pay E911, pays for five dispatchers, it pays for half of our battalion chief that's in charge of E911. We've got the court jail, court correction that pay for corrections officer, court people, and that's about $1.7 million that's not even in our general fund. So, you know, as long as we're able to pay that with restricted money, it helps the general fund. But in the event that that was to change and that burden was put on the general fund, that, you know, that would be an item that would increase that general fund expense by about 10%, which would be, you know, be a tough number in current revenue situation for the general fund to handle.
And that's one, Dr. James pointed out before about, I know the new council's been here, that's one we actually watch the Randy Hamley, because every time we add a streetlight, then that's taking a burden on the seven cent. Right now, it takes 70% of Randy Hamley's department, the general fund only takes 30. So like Robert's numbers, that's about $400,000 on that. It's traffic department that's taken out of Fund 4 on that sheet.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyway, it's 70% Randy's traffic department. So that was one of the things I know we probably need to go back and analyze that with him because every time we commit to one and we add it on our bill, then that's less, at some point, that's why I want to bring it up, it gets to where it can't handle that, we'll have to shift that back to the general fund at a different percentage.
I know with some of the court accounts, they've been moving to try to be self-funding. John Morgan has always talked about getting to the point where he is self-funding. His expenses, but like everything else, his, the court revenue was down, was cut in half this year just because of, prior year because of COVID. But he is, he's moving towards trying to be self-funding in court.
Berkeley ain't quite moved to self-funding. It's just his second hit this year. Park break basically yet.
But, you know, I'd like to, you know, it is, the mayor had asked y'all, asked the department heads to watch their spending. I think they've done an excellent job. Counsel with y'all holding up on some of the capital projects, y'all have done, you know, done a great job with our capital revenue. And remember, like I said, we haven't had the luxury this year of transferring that million dollars out of the general fund to capital, to fund capital. So that's going to hurt that fund a little bit this year. But all in all, I think, you know, the picture is looking brighter, it's getting better. The revenues are starting to, starting to come in. Like I said earlier, lodging revenue took a big jump in April over the prior months. That is what I have, Mr. Jones, if you have questions or...
You got anything you want to say, Mr. Jones?
No, no, I think, I think you said it well. It's really been an overall team effort from the mayor's office to counsel, to you and Ms. Salter kind of navigating us through this time. And we really didn't know when some of these revenues were coming back. We looked at lodging and thought, are we ever going to recover? And we're not going to make our number for this year by any means, but, but all signs are that we're making progress in getting, getting back to some type semblance of normal. But we understand that because of the tier-one conversion, as you've gone over very well there, we've got to make some difficult decisions as a council as we look at our, at our new budget coming up. So if we can get through this particular budget cycle and be prepared for next fiscal year, I think we're going to have the tools available to us to know what we do need to be judicious with our spending and what can we, what can we do to make sure we identify every bit of revenue that's available to us. As we know, the infrastructure bill is in Congress, but we have no idea what it's going to end up looking like and what it means to us. But I want to thank you for all the work you've put in to this report because I think we all need to review kind of what priorities are and realize that we can't, we can't do everything we want to do based on where we are now. But that was really all I was going to add.
Thank you. I think those are worthwhile comments and accurate for where we are. Does any, do any counselors have questions about anything that Robert presented?
I guess my biggest question is obviously, we've increased our revenue, I mean, our expenses and our revenue's down as we would expect. Would you say that a majority of the increases that we're tending to have, Robert, you know, from 37 million in '19 to 20 and 38 million, you know, just going up slightly, but is it typically just personnel more than anything else?
It's mostly the personnel and the insurance costs. The general liability and the workers' comp insurance, workers' comp falls under personnel expense. Utility costs are up slightly, but it's mostly in personnel. The expenditures for, for just supplies and smaller expenses, they have been... The expenditures for, for just supplies and, and smaller expenses, they have been held in check very well by all departments.
And, and one thing, we didn't give a COLA this year, but if you look back some of the others, the council, in the past few years, before we were blessed with non-COVID, they were trying to really try to get a COLA to kinda catch us up, 'cause we've been behind, and so when you compare that, the COLA's gonna affect the salary and the pension, because the pension is gonna be based on a higher salary, so, um, that's one of the reasons why the expenditures, we expected them to rise for the years that they did, for the fact that, that was part of what we put in, we tell you how much a COLA costs, is it not only the one percent or two percent you give, but it's the effect on workers, affects workers' comp and affects your pension and the FIC expense the city pays, so it affects all those line items.
Yeah, we, we've given COLAs in the past, and, and a one percent COLA equates to about a two hundred twenty thousand dollar annual expense to the city, just one, a one percent COLA.
It continues on, my, that, that's an expense that will forever be in your budget.
It's in perpetuity.
And, and just one of the things is, is to make sure that, you know, we did receive that money in last fiscal year, that we said we'd finish with possibly sixty-five to ninety four, we're still finalizing the audit, sixty-five to ninety-five thousand, and they didn't count much, we paid bonuses, we did pay bonuses, but we have no COVID money in these numbers we're giving you right now. There's, suppose, was supposedly awarded, but I, I hope we haven't seen or gotten any money back, so there's nothing to worry about.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yeah, my, my only real, real question is, what, uh, do we know what the timeline is, um, for when the target abatement will be finished, and that will start coming online for city revenue?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Kendrick had, has that, uh, but, and you do too, Ms. Saltzer, it, it was a year amount, and then it was also, I mean, it was a timeline, but it was also an amount, and we're gonna reach the amount before we reach the timeline.
I think we're less than two years away.
Yeah, we have, it's a two million dollar payment.
No, I thought we were, I thought we were still around five years off.
No, we're less than that, we've been doing better.
Okay.
We're less than three years off.
It won't be this year.
But it was nine million or fifteen years, whichever comes first, and we're gonna be at nine million. If, if it keeps on the way it's been, the last time Robert, we, Robert and I looked at it before the mid-year, we were probably less, we're probably two years away in nine.
God, that's great.
Two years by the timeline or two years by the revenue stream?
By the revenue. We're, we're gonna hit the nine million before we ever get close.
Well, we, we're gonna, we're gonna probably have eighteen, it's gonna count, we pay it two times a year, so we, we, we're gonna be another possible two years before you can put that money back in our budget, so to speak. It's net out of revenue, eighteen months to two years. We only make payments twice a year in March and September, so when I looked at what, I mean, I don't know exactly a March and September to get to that point, because you don't know exactly every month what they're gonna be, but roughly, we have probably less than two, about two point some years left, and then, then that can stop. And that's not an expense that you see on the expenditure side, that comes out of our revenue, that's different than the board of education expense, that you see on the expense side, it's actually net, our revenue, the numbers that he gives you are net of the target checks, or colonial, actually, he'll be writing checks to colonial markets.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Simp?
Uh, yes, Robert, I just had a couple of questions about this, so one is, do you, do you have already prepared something where you can show us the analysis of kind of like the seventy-two percent of personnel costs versus other costs, just kind of so we can also review that information? And as well as maybe, uh, comparison of fixed and non-fixed expenses during this time?
Well, we, I, we've got a sheet here that, I guess we, we could, no, I'm sorry, I guess, we got a sheet here that we can, I will send out to y'all that has a breakdown on the, um, on payroll versus, um, the operating revenue, and we can forward that to you, and it is, it's by department, so it'll.
That would be, that would be great, um, because I was gonna say the other thing would be, it'd be great to see that by department, I mean, especially, just being new, it would be really great to look at that and, and, and see how that is, breaks down personnel, non-personnel type costs. And then the other thing is, uh, I feel like it probably wasn't too long ago to really see an impact, but have we noticed any difference in like the refinancing of some of the recent debt? Has, have we been able to track that? Is there any, any difference in the positive there?
In, in, in the bond proceeds? We, we had the refi in December that we received a refund that is currently in, in, at Bryant Bank, that there's been no expenditures taken from yet.
Okay.
That was, that was December, I believe, December twenty, refi?
Yeah, that's five million dollars.
Yeah, that was, that was part of that ref- refinancing that we did, um, and I think we'll probably talk about that a little bit more at the next meeting, when we're talking about, uh, all of the different things that we've got, but to answer your question, that, that money is there.
Okay.
And, and another, one other item is the, we had the two thousand seventeen refunding, which, um, was approximately six hundred seventy thousand, with, that's what the Green Springs property was purchased with, so.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, Mr. Allen?
So, uh, Councilor Jones referred to the fact that we're gonna have to make some difficult choices, and I suppose that it will be at the next meeting, where are we gonna go through a kind of systematic approach in which we list the expenditures that we have on deck, and then decide as to what perhaps we have to cut and what we're going to move forward on? I just wanna set some process to how we make these decisions.
So I, I think it will be that way, so I, I think we, we're gonna have a, uh, some decisions that, uh, Mr. Mayor, you may want to address this as well, but.
Yeah, I mean, and, and certainly what, what everybody has, has stated so far in, in regards to, uh, how well the department heads have worked to kinda prioritize what needs to be spent right now and what doesn't have to be spent right now based off of the spending freeze, uh, that we've been put on. But I think some of the hard conversations that we've had to have during department head meetings over the past several months, those are what are gonna, are going to bring us to the, basically the prioritization of the capital projects, whether, you know, they've already been budgeted, uh, because we did approve, uh, some projects in the budget from twenty twenty for, and twenty twenty-one, to others that we know are on our list, uh, right now. Um, so those, I'll have another department head meeting next Tuesday, we're gonna go back through all of those once again, and kinda put a list together as departments, uh, because they know what they have left and inside their budgets for the rest, 'cause unfortunately, now we're on a short timeframe, uh, before next, next fiscal year, so we need to make sure that the things that we're going to try and do within this timeframe, we can actually do with the money that's there, or if we need to punt it till, uh, the twenty-one, twenty-two budget year, then we can do that as well. But that's, that's what we'll come from when, when you guys set the second meeting.
And those recommendations.
If that makes sense.
And those recommendations will come from the department heads and yourself?
Correct, correct, yeah.
And that'll help us prioritize and, and narrow the field.
That's right. Uh, 'cause I mean, the, the, we will, we will continue to work on what needs to be worked on, but we just have to kinda put that list together and figure out, okay, here's, here's what's already been budgeted, here's something that we know we can take care of during this fiscal year, you know, we may be able, may be able to take care of part of one project, and then we'll punt the rest of it to twenty, one, twenty-two, but we'll get that list to you, and then that's when you guys will set the second meeting.
And just one last follow-up.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
In terms of how these are, things are prioritized, is it just mostly around fiscal considerations in terms of what's easier, what's doable, versus as opposed to, some of these capital projects have to do with safety, have to do with accessibility? So I'm just wondering how these are prioritized.
Yeah, so I think, I think you're gonna see a mixture of both, um, honestly, but you've also got, and Berkeley's probably back there shaking his head right now, um, you've also got a lot of emergencies that are going to unfortunately have to be taken care of here very soon in regards to infrastructure. We have six pipes across the city that we know, because we have already videotaped them, that have collapsed, that we are going to have to replace. And those emergencies unfortunately take precedent over some of the things that we do have already budgeted in place. So again, those are the, those are the hard conversations, like I said, that we're, that we're having to have with, uh, with our department heads to be able to go through these things, and, and those, those right now take priority, and we'll go down that list, um, as we continue through, but I'll, I'll have an update for you guys as soon as I can, and that way, that gives Alex and Walter the ability to set the next, uh, committee as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions? Well, if not, then, uh, I will just take a quick moment to reiterate, uh, what Mr. Burgett and Mr. Jones said, that, uh, thank you to all of you on council, uh, thank you to all the department heads and, and the mayor's office, uh, and thank you to Melanie and Robert as well. No, no one signed up for this year. Um, it, it, I'm, I'm trying very hard to not use the word unprecedented, 'cause I know Mr. Jones doesn't like it, and I've gotten tired of it as well, because it doesn't seem to have enough meaning, but this, this is very much, it has been a year like any other, and it's, um, or unlike any other, and, and it's, uh, you know, it, it's not difficult, and it could have been, it would have been very easy to just sort of fall behind and, and have, uh, some significant problems, and I think we as a city have done a good job of, of navigating these waters, uh, without a map, so to speak. But I do think we can see the light at the end of the tunnel. I do think we're still in the tunnel, uh, but, but we're, we're getting there, and I, I, I think we, we will be there soon, so, uh, thank you to all of you for doing that. And with that, we will adjourn this meeting, and we'll be back in a little less than fifteen minutes to start the regular meeting.